Order, roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Sosmarski, not here. Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Artiwood?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes from June thirteenth. Any...
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation: Approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Chicagoland Paving Contractors Incorporated for the fiscal year 2025. Pavement patching program in an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Do we have any questions? Okay, roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwood?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings: Tree ordinance amendments in August. Stormwater, Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow merge, August. Elizabeth Drive MUP. Bridges easements, land acquisition, maintenance agreements to be discussed. Streetlight installation to be discussed. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee, if the minute taker could note, the same members are present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections for the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. I have one report and recommendation. It is the elected official allowance. Dr. Iberas, do you have a few comments?
Yes, thank you. So, as you may recall, a couple of months ago, the IT device allowance was brought forward to committee, and at that time, that item was tabled. Now, after receiving some feedback, staffs are really looking forward for direction on the proposed elected official allowance.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Alderman Artwoods?
I'll make a motion to approve the allowance.
Second.
Mayor Police?
What are we approving? Two hundred ninety-four dollars per quarter?
Yes.
And... So I got a couple of problems here. Why iPad? Why is there an allowance for the iPad? We get one. It's not a good one, but we get one to read the packets. Business cards? How many business cards do we... Everybody buy business cards? What, we reimbursing people for business cards? We're buying our own? The city should be handling that stuff. Name tags? How many name tags we get? We... I don't understand some of this stuff. Now, I'll agree. So when we started this years ago, three of us got our own laptops because we used to get paper packets. And then all of a sudden, we went to the, whatever it was back then, to get rid of the paper packets, go greener, all this stuff. Never was a discussed, an allowance for Internet, like we get a phone allowance of twenty dollars. So, I probably... That probably should have been discussed. It was never discussed. Wallets. Municipal handbooks. Roberts rules. What, we getting new prints every year? I mean, it's twelve dollars, twelve dollars I get it. Shirts and jackets. Now, I was always under the impression we got two shirts per year if somebody wanted them. I don't... I don't know what the prices were. If you wanted more, you had to pay for them. But I... Now, asking questions. Well, some people might have gotten three in a year, maybe. I don't know. I didn't get into full depth. But, I mean, I've got shirts. This one I got on is ten years old. I haven't taken a shirt for probably five years, since we changed the... We got those dark green ones with the new logo. So, if I don't get shirts, what, I get reimbursed every year for shirts that I don't buy? That doesn't sit well. I mean, we got elected to save money and do things right. I understand, if somebody needs a shirt, get a shirt. Do we need to set a number? Everything is kind of loose. It's not really written in the code books. I mean, when I first started, myself as the mayor and clerk got city phones. I'm like, what's this? So, okay, it was happening, and I'm like, is this somewhere in the code book? Everybody else gets an allowance. Why did the other two? And it wasn't in the code books, so we got rid of those. This, the optics of this, it looks like we're trying to... I don't know, is this cash? Or we buying something, we turn in receipts? I'm a little confused, because the optics to me look like, well, we're just trying to give ourselves a raise. If staff want to give ourselves a raise, that's a different discussion. I want to know what's going on here. Do we turn in the receipts, or what? I don't know, somebody can answer.
Mr. Iberas, did you have feedback on that? Or do we want to take more questions or comments?
We can go ahead and take...
Okay, all right. Alderman Messina?
Yeah, no, I think it's very subjective, right? I think, not to my own horn, but I guarantee you, I probably get, as Jeff unfortunately has to bear it, more texts than anybody up here. Probably get at least twenty-five texts a day from people. I data plan. Also laptop. I've had to now buy a personal laptop because I got my work one here, and I'm not going to get fired. I'm like, you, you could take the chance. I'm not. So I had to buy another laptop. So to me, the iPad is worthless. Because, yeah, you can have... You can sw... You can go through the packet. That's peanuts. For me, I think also the evolution of like, either text, and maybe, I'm hoping everyone else is kind of experiencing the same. It's either text, or it's email. And when it's email, it's a, oh my God, brace yourself, this is a half hour. I can't type it on an iPad. And then how many times have I asked you, drop it in... Can you put it in Dropbox? Which, on the iPad, it's a lot harder to get something in Dropbox, pull it up. For me, it's just so much easier with the iPad, with the laptop. And then, you and I always work in Excel all the time. Again, maybe we run our ward a little different, but like, we're constantly going through spreadsheets, trying to track stuff. So for me, I think what you're saying, I get it in some aspects. But I think others, like, to me, we need the allowance. Now, whether it's that high of an amount, maybe not. But I definitely think the iPad is worthless.
Mayor Police?
Just to go back, so, right, this thing we got here, right, useless. It's just good for reading packets, and that's about it. I'm looking down at the counter here, and I see two different units that we've gotten. So, I don't have a problem with us spending a little more money. And I think I said it when we were... Before we got these, and all of a sudden, these show up, which I wasn't happy about. But that's what the city provides. As far as the phone allowance and the Internet, right, we've never gotten that. And there should be something. I agree. I don't have a problem with that. Buying a laptop because it looks like every four years, or... I think I read somewhere. Honestly, I have my laptop at home for ten years.
Why? And it's still sitting at home?
Well, again, why are we buying a laptop at sixteen hundred dollars? I mean, sixteen hundred dollars, I get a really nice laptop. That's ridiculous.
That's kind of the point.
Dial up.
So, again, Internet service, the cell phone, we want to increase that a little bit, whatever. I get it. Getting a different unit than this, oh, yeah, I'm all for it. And give us something bigger, larger, something more useful. I'm okay with that. We all get the same thing. I mean,
Right.
that looks nice over there, but I don't know how those work.
Well, and I'll just comment too, that when I was issued the same type of device that you had, it was a hand-me-down from a previous council member, and it just simply didn't work. And the IT department here supported either fixing it or replacing it. And I think I had two of them that did not function properly. So then, I was issued this from the city. But if there's anything that goes wrong with it, it's a city device. It does have Excel, it does have Word. It allows me to open up the meeting. Any emails that I get from residents, anything from the city, or packets, I can go on the Internet with it, and it's supported from the IT department. It does what the... What it's supposed to. And it's...
It doesn't.
I don't know how long they typically last, but I would agree with you that I probably have devices for a longer time than most people. I don't know if a four-year replacement cycle is typical or not. But we're issued this device to serve its purpose, and I think it does. If there's something beyond that that somebody needs, that's different than what this is supposed to provide for us. So, I don't... I don't know that we need to have anything beyond what we're issued, because I think this is enough to do the job. And as far as some of the other things, yeah, the business cards, the name tags, the shirts, anything with a logo or any branded things from the city, I don't think people should be able to buy that on their own. Are we going to be giving our logos to everybody to just print on things? And I feel like that's something that the city should monitor. And the colors should be the same, everything should be the same. And we shouldn't just be able to go out and buy whatever we want, however it looks. It should be uniform looking, just like business cards should all be the same. If I go to a business card company, I have to pay a setup fee. I have to do all this, same thing with shirts. So I think that's probably more money than what's on this list, too. So I think there's... It's valuable to have the city monitor this and keep it consistent for everybody. So, Alderman Artwoods, you had your hand up the longest, I think.
Thank you. There's a lot to unpack there. Starting out, since I was the biggest proponent of eliminating the paper packet, and the first one that brought the iPad, the amount of money that we've saved in printing, people stapling, police department driving around is a huge number. It's an incredible amount of money. We're spending this money already. The fact that we operate, I think that Alderman Messina summed it up. We all operate a little differently. Isn't the, I want one have to be better than yours or not better than yours? If all you do is answer email and do a few things, that's good for you. You can still stay on the same program. Right now, for the last fourteen years, I've supplied my own. So why is it I get zero? Your argument is, well, because I want a nicer one. I'm willing to get the same amount of money that you're getting. You just told me you went through three units in two years. Right?
That's because the ones that I was given didn't work.
Yeah.
It's not that they...
Apparently, that's... Exactly.
Right, because they were the older units.
Right, so they do wear out. They do have a time, a life cycle. I think if we got the IT people in here, they would say it's probably four years. Maybe you argue it's five years. I don't know. But I would tell you that that's pretty close to what the number is. And have to pe... No, not have to people. Some of the people, if you're not reelected, what would be the point of the life cycle? It only matters to somebody who's here longer. As far as getting the cards, I don't think anybody's going to go redesign their own cards. The problem is that some people get certain things, or do more. Get more. I'm just looking for it to be even across the board. The phone needed to be raised, has been raised since I've been here, again, fourteen years. I mean, it's ridiculously low to have a... Whether it's a laptop or an iPad that doesn't have Internet access, almost becomes useless, because you do more than sit in a fixed position somewhere, either at the dais where you can hook up the Wi-Fi, or in your home office. Everything's mobile today. So I don't think that that's right. Some guys, the mayor says he doesn't get shirts. I don't know if he does or doesn't, but I know other people, they get lots of shirts. I have very few shirts. All I'm saying is, again, why isn't it even? If we're going to create a policy, that should be a part of this conversation, then. Everybody gets two shirts every year, or whatever it is. We say that. I even had a memo, this is going back two years now, to say, pick out four or five things, because it hadn't been done in a while. Pick four or five, and never got anything. I got one shirt. So, I'd just soon take care of it myself. If I want...
So are you saying that...
If I want something different, if I want an embroidered golf shirt as opposed to whatever somebody else gets, it's going to have the same logo that the city has.
So are you saying if you choose to not take your two shirts for the year, that you should get paid in lieu of that?
I'm saying I would get a shirt. What's the difference if the shirt I want, I'm going to embroider, costs a hundred bucks, versus the one that they have for fifty? I'm only going to get the fifty bucks. I'm only going to get what you're getting. I get that you don't want to do anything, you don't want to call anybody, you don't want to fix the computer, you don't want any... And that option's still available to you. But my option shouldn't be zero, because I want something different. I should still at least get the same value that you're getting. And I'm not picking on you, just only because you brought up the computer.
That's fine, that's fine. Mayor Police?
Go ahead, Peter was first.
Oh, Peter, or, sorry, Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, so, a few things. So like the shirts, we've always been allowed two shirts a year. So I don't know why we would actually get paid for that. I mean, if I wanted a shirt, I'd say, Brad, could I get one of my two shirts, or whatever? They gave me a catalog that I could choose from, if I wanted it embroidered. Again, I didn't get a bill, I didn't pay for it out of pocket, so I'm not really sure why I would get reimbursed for that. The laptops, a hundred percent. I mean, you know, when we... When I started on council, I've been here eleven and a half years now. When I started, I mean, we had iPads that were barely working. So then, they upgraded them, and whatever that tablet that the mayor has, it didn't have Internet, and for me, that didn't work. I mean, I like to be out on the road, and if I want to, you know, hook up to my phone to be able to send an email when I'm out on the road, I mean, it's like Alderman Woods said, it's... We're mobile. I mean, we're... That's the society we live in. I don't want to have to write on paper, run to my house, and type into some antiquated tablet that the city got. So, I went out and bought my own iPad myself. Not an iPad, an iBook, a phone, you know, laptop. So I agree with the laptops. I mean, the business cards? I mean, anytime I needed business cards, I would go to Brad or whoever, and I'd get business cards. I mean, how often is that? I mean, I probably haven't ordered business cards. I think the last time I got business cards, when we changed our logo. The name badges, I mean, Janelle usually gets those for us. So again, I don't know why we would want to get them ourselves. I mean, Janelle takes care of that for us. So, but I am all for the IT allowance for a laptop. You know, if the city's not going to supply it, then it's like Alderman Messina said, I'm not going to use my personal laptop that I use for work and lose risking my job getting city emails there. So that's why I ended up buying one. So I definitely agree with the allowance. I'm not sure how all of a sudden, the shirts, the business cards, all this other stuff came into play.
Alderman Messina?
So, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing. Like, it's an allowance, right? You're going to spend money how you want. I'm going to spend money like, I asked for a windbreaker, and I was told no. Now, different, right? I have hundreds of poles, I don't need any more poles. So different for me. I think business cards, I would argue, different. For me, I'm going to be doing a QR code. That's the new trend. Like, I'm in technology, so for me, it's... I'm not going to give you a business card, you're going to put your phone by it, like, and you're going to scan it, and you're going to go right to my profile on LinkedIn, and you're going to connect with me. Or you're going to go right to the Wooddale page. Right, like, so those are things that I'm doing, different. The clothing allowance, allowance, different, right? Like, my windbreaker may cost a hundred dollars. But like, I think what we're all saying is, if we have an allowance of six hundred dollars, or whatever it is, like, however you want to spend it, knock your socks off, because there may be less for you, Nunes. You have... It's an elective choice for you to decide what you want. I know, I'm probably still going to come out of pocket, based on how I run my ward and my business here. I still do that. I... Even business cards thinking about that, you probably didn't think about that. We spend a ton of money on door hangers. So when we go to people's house and they're not there, we put a door hanger on there. I'm not saying you have to do that, but I'm saying that we come out of pocket for that. So like, I would rather just say, here's your little allowance, do whatever you want with it. And here, and that's it. I get it. There's always the risk that somebody's just going to pocket the money. I have friends that are officers that, no offense, they get a uniform allowance. And I can think of three of them, they just take the money and like, I'm good, I'll keep the same uniform. Not our officers, friends. So I mean, it is what it is, right? Like, you just have to have trust in the system. So for me, I know I'll still come out of pocket with this amount.
Mayor Police?
Actually, I asked that question. How does it work with the rest of the city, public works, police, everything? So, some of the younger ones, who haven't been here as long, they're probably still buying uniforms and whatnot. Those that have been here longer, if they don't use their allowance, they don't just get paid out. I... Am I correct?
That's correct. The city tracks and pays the vendor directly for those specific units.
Right.
Different Chicago.
Yeah, so... So, because I choose not to get a shirt, then let's say you two, you guys all got two each, I should get, you know, whatever, thirty-three bucks, sixty-five dollars a year. It's, you know, the laptop, honestly, this is garbage. Give us a good one with Internet. I'm okay with that, but the city owns them, the city takes care of them. And maybe not everybody uses the same thing. Somebody might like Microsoft, somebody likes whatever, Apple, whatever the deal is, right? You guys are more tech savvy than I am. But something better than this, this is garbage. I said it from the first day we got it. I'm like, what's this junk? Right, Jeff? As soon as you gave it to me, I'm like, what's this crap? It's not right. Give us... You're going to give us something, give us, you know, at least give me a fifteen, seventeen-inch laptop. I mean, something like that, it looks better. I don't know if it works any better.
So far, it hasn't.
But, you know, and I could tell you, at my work, you get five hundred dollar allowance total. So if you're working there for ten years or twenty years, five hundred dollar allowance, period, for laptop accessories, screens, docking station, whatever. Here, we're talking about four hundred bucks just for the laptop per year. Why is it four hundred bucks per year? Give me a laptop instead of, if we paid three hundred or three fifty or four hundred for this, why not just spend six hundred and give me something that's going to last? Because really, we needed some Internet, some... Some elected go to residents, they take pictures, whatever. I would do that with my phone, but they take pictures, they take notes, you know, whatever. Whatever they do with it, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But sixteen hundred bucks, business cards, honestly, this stuff should be... If I own my business, I'm not letting my employees buy their own business cards. City should handle that. You know, the Illinois Municipal Handbook, really, we put twelve bucks in a term every... Come on. Some of this stuff, the shirts, put something in the code, whatever, make it so it's... You get two shirts, but if you don't... If you don't buy two shirts, you don't get any money. Just like the rest of the city.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yeah. I can only speak for myself for what the concept was. And I'll rephrase it. The fact that I want to buy a more expensive shirt, or to Alderman Messina's point, that he wants a windbreaker, or a parka, or whatever it is that's going to be branded, he's willing to pay the difference. Why is it we get net zero? That's ridiculous.
I get it.
No, 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 let me finish. You've been talking for a half hour. We already know your opinion, that you don't want any of it. I got it. But I'm going to go back to the business cards before we changed them to the gray ones. I went out, I didn't like them because they were thin. I went and got a thicker one. Everybody looked at it, complained. You had everybody went to the city and went, we should all get the thicker ones. I paid for mine, everybody, yes, you.
I didn't get it.
I went and got the... Stop. I went and got a gold name tag, because I didn't like the ones that we had prior to the gray ones. Again, came here, why do you have the gold one? I said, well, I just went and bought my own. You liked them, we changed them. Not only that, you changed the gold ones on the dais within the same thirty days. This is all I'm saying, is I... Just because I want something different, I'm willing to pay the difference, but I don't want to have to go start at zero when everybody else gets something else. That's ridiculous. I'm not asking you to give me a check for something I'm not getting. I'm looking to offset the cost I'm already spending. And the fact that I do things different, or more online than anybody else, and I'm not saying anybody else, because I know that there's a few people up here that are tech savvy, and that's what they're using. The same thing with the business card. Whether it's a thicker card, whether you got the QR codes on it, they're still going to be branded. We got one guy who's got the, right, he's got the Marine emblem on it, the city's... What's the difference? Everybody's doing something a little different, and nobody should walk away with zero. I hear everybody complain about the laptop, and then go, why do we got to spend more than six hundred? Because it costs more than six hundred for a better laptop. That's what they cost. Why is it four years? Because that's a typical life cycle. Bring our IT guy in, he'll tell you. You know how I know that? Because he sat here and argued it for his staff. So the argument can't change, that they last forever. The fact that you use the same one at your home doesn't mean it's actually working the way it should. I mean, after a while, they just don't work. Software doesn't work, there's no backup, there's no support, there's no service. They don't work. When you're sitting here going, this thing won't load, that's because it doesn't work anymore. This is the way it works. I mean, I don't get why everybody's thinking, this isn't a get-rich-quick scheme. This isn't a backdoor race. This is already, after fourteen years, it's going to get something more than zero, because he's paid for his own stuff for fourteen years. I don't know what part you don't understand about that. Why is that so foreign?
Mayor Police?
Why do I get zero?
Again, I'm all in favor for getting better laptops.
But it's the same with everything else. If I want to go buy a hundred dollar shirt and embroider it...
Well, so Tony buys his shirts, and he just gets the embroidery, because he doesn't want the city shirts.
Right.
I get it.
So he's spending his own money.
Because...
So I say to him...
Because they're made in the USA. I like to buy the ones made in the USA.
So whether it's one you didn't like, or whether it's made in the USA, or if you want a nicer shirt, which I'm going to represent the city in. So, I don't know why it would be a negative thing that I want to go get a different shirt and spend more money for it. I'm not going to get any more money. I'm going to get the same amount that somebody else is going to get for the shirt they get. So if you're allowed two a year, you can cut it down to one a year. You want to make the number zero, that's fine. I just want everybody on the same zero.
But for all... But for all of these things that are on this list, the city is providing an appropriate item for it. It's the choice of the person if they want something bigger, better, different.[1755.14] something bigger, better, different. And just the example of the cards here with the Marine Corps emblem. If somebody wanted the QR code, I would imagine you could approach the, the city and say, this is, you know, maybe we should look at doing this for everybody. It's not just you.
Maybe we eliminate staff doing all this personal work for us, getting our own stuff. It's not that hard to call the card shop and get cards. We know where they're at.
Right, but then do we
It takes ten seconds.
So do we individually go to different card shops and now the city logo is everywhere that anybody could just get a city business card made, or a name badge? I mean, there's gotta be some consistency.
They can get a badge now and do this, I mean.
I could go print out any village's logo, just give me fifteen minutes and a laptop that works on the internet.
Like we moved to the like we moved to the font, right? Like, I had a big debate. I think you chose that one. No offense. I don't like, we used to have the old school.
I did not.
Oh, I thought you did. Somebody mentioned.
Provided this from the city.
Oh, no, I meant like the, the font. I thought Janelle, so like, I'm like, getting in an argument with Janelle, like, I don't want that, I don't care who proposed it. Why are we moving away from it? I don't want it. So like, even though I, I, it wasn't worth the argument, I dealt with those now, like the new font that you have on your jacket, like, and I won't wear, I just, for me personally, I won't wear it, so I gotta come out of pocket to buy, to, to buy my own, cause I would just rather do that. Like, I guess the net of everything, I guess Alderman Woods is saying is like, we, it's very subjective, like what I would want might be very different than what you want, and what Noons would, I mean, one would argue, you probably would be the most at risk to pocket it, cause you're not gonna spend a penny. You'll keep it for the next twenty years. So like, it's not fair. I could turn the argument on you and say, you're not gonna spend it. I think the reality is, I don't mind anybody else, but I, I'd lose, I'd lose more money than I make here. I mean, I'm constantly giving back. And I'm okay with that. That's what I signed up for and I get back where I can. But some of this stuff is kinda ridiculous, like, I can't, I can't take the risk of, like, my phone. I mean, here you go.
Right.
This is still a work phone. Like, I can't keep getting twenty texts a day. Literally, Jeff, I text you, how many times a day do I share? Literally, nonstop. If they were to look at my phone, I'd be probably fired. So I had to go get another phone. You, you're, I'm not getting enough money to pay, but all of that stuff, all these line items are all just line items. If someone just gave you the money and said, here it is, do whatever you want. Do you wanna, you wanna get a branded Ferrari, go ahead. Pay out of your own pocket, here's six hundred bucks. I, I, I don't know, but I think it's just getting, we're wasting so much staff time on the petty stuff. I would rather, I agree, maybe they're streamlined, you can only buy through this vendor if you're gonna do the jacket, and when, and you pay out of pocket, right? I think we can establish that. If I need to call whatever places, uh, where we, Alpha Graphics. Okay, here you go. I'm gonna pay for that, right? Like, maybe we streamline some things, but at the end of the day, at least I have a little bit more money to help fund these things, right?
Mayor, please.
I'm just, I wanna hear, so are you returning in a bill to the city and, or we're just gonna get a check? And if I buy business cards, and I only got one business card, this new one, one box, whatever it was, four or five years ago. I don't know about any thicker or whatever. I didn't never heard any, that's the first time I heard about that. I just like.
Thicker, because I went and bought thicker ones, and we switched to the thicker ones.
And I'm like, we're, well, we're switching, we're branding everything. Okay, so I got one box. I wasn't even finished with the old ones. Actually, I used those first before I even started the new ones.
So you wanna cut it down to one box for four years?
No, no.
I'm fine with that.
No, I'm, no. I'm, I'm not, the, the, for me, it's, I asked, how many people get more than one box of business cards a year? And I heard, well, not really. Okay, so.
That's cause I go and buy my own. That's really. It's easier for me to do that than to call here and wait.
But shirts.
I ordered four shirts and never got them, so please spare me the time.
Why, why didn't you get them?
Exactly. Thank you.
There should be, and it's not even in the code, it's, it's, it's it's ki, it's kind of unwritten, the rule, so maybe, okay, you're allowed to get two shirts or whatever, or whatever, I, I don't know, but if you don't get them, we're not just getting a check.
I'm gonna get the shirt. How many times do I gotta say that?
I understand, I understand.
More expensive one.
And that's fine. You just put in the difference, right? You buy the more expensive one, you get the difference.
I just say one thing.
Are they getting the bills?
Promise I'll say it.
Alderman Messina.
Just please, and I have this conversation, you should know especially, Noons, your procurement, total cost of procurement. If I gotta go, the amount of time, probably, we paid this staff member, I won't say who, to drop what she was doing, to figure out why Alderman Messino wants this part, and, and you, and, and like, Jeff, and like, you do the total cost of what that took to fight, and, and I love them to death. They dropped, I'm sure they dropped everything, cause it's like, oh my god. The mayor's calling, or, or the alderman's calling, oh my god. So like, think about the amount of work they dropped, the total cost to procure something. They could've just said yes, and that would've made up the difference. Instead, probably wasted three hours of staff time, two different, or three different people's time. So if we do the total cost of ownership, and we look at what they're paying, we're paying our staff members for some to process even a receipt, right? What is the point? We're trying to simplify the process and say, here's the amount, right? We trust in that, just like our people trust in us, right? Like, I, that's, we're trying to streamline. If you do the total cost of the, to procure on all that stuff, it, it would be a lot higher. So I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yeah, I mean, a few things. One, the, the Wooddale logo is super easy to get. We could all get it. You guys all probably already have it. I got it within the first week from Janelle, was able to get my own stuff printed. Uh, two, as a newer alderman, my experience getting shirts, I know there were issues with the vendor. We got a new vendor. It took four and a half months for me to get shirts. I had no Wooddale shirts for four and a half months. Not the end of the world, but if I control my own destiny, I already got the logo, why can't I just get my own made? Uh, three, it seems like we're missing the part in here, and maybe I'm misreading it, but it seems like there's still an option. So if you wanna opt out of doing this, and you wanna keep the city-issued laptop and the city-issued business cards, and don't wanna partake in the allowance and get your own stuff, you can still do that. Am I not understanding that correctly?
You are correct.
Okay, so if you like that, and the mayor likes this or the upgraded, I mean, these things don't connect to the internet unless you're on wifi. I don't want that. I wanna be mobile, I wanna be everywhere. Most corporations now have a BYOD, you know, bring your own device, or you get a corporate-issued device, it's one or the other. You get the option, or you get the allowance for your BYOD device. I mean, there's this is so, the way it is right now is so antiquated and crazy that this makes the most sense. I, I do agree with some of
Twenty twenty-four.
I get some of the thing, you know, we don't need a new Roberts Rules book and all that, but Alderman Messina's point, this is just, hey, here's forty-seven hundred bucks over the course of four years, that's gonna cover you. I mean, no computer is lasting longer than that and still functioning properly, so. If Randy wants a computer, Peter wants a physical computer, my Art wants a laptop, Tony wants, I mean, you can pick whatever you want. You're not locked into an iPad, you're not locked into Microsoft, you can do whatever you want, so that's my point.
Jacob.
Yeah, the, the only thing I was gonna say is, I don't know if it was Alderman Woods or Alderman Messina, but I, I never realized that was happening. I mean, if you wanted a shirt that was a hundred dollars, and the shirt I get is fifty dollars, somebody should've cut you a check for fifty and said, you know, go buy your two hundred dollar shirt, or a hundred dollar shirt.
I, I just want it to be, to, to be even. There's, that's the only way for it to be even, and I can, I'm speaking personally, and I've been here for a little while. To, to tell, tell you the, the experience. I mean, you, you can ask Jeff how many boxes of cards probably through the city, two. One when I got on, and, and the, the first one when you guys changed the logo, the rest I bought myself. It's just easier for me to call and get it done than to call somebody here, wait, they're not here, call back, leave a message, did you get it? Oh, by the way, I wanna change something or do something, right? It's back and forth, it's ten phone calls to get a box of cards. They're, they're like thirty bucks. I can get it done in, in five minutes on the phone. It's not that
I was just gonna say, I mean, kinda, yeah, right, to reinforce this, it's, for me, it's about the staff time. I'm sure they're annoyed with me. Like, if I'm asking petty questions, and again, thank you, love you guys, they drop everything. I know it, cause I'm getting emails five seconds after, right? Like, oh my god, we're working on this. And I'm like, we gotta Prairie Fest, we have this to work on. So I'm sure you want your people spending your, their time on more important things. Let me handle it. And again, if you don't want, if you want staff to handle it, to Artie, Alderman, Artie Woods' point, like, then knock your slacks off. Let staff do it, but like, for us to bog them down with this stuff is just pointless.
So I guess we're at the point. So you wanted some direction on what to do, and it sounds like we're
We have a motion.
A motion.
Yes.
A second.
So.
Take a vote, I guess, all right?
I just had, I had a question. Some towns, I guess they have on the dais, they have the installed computer. Uh, maybe they're not having this conversation, you know, they, um, like Bensonville, correct? Go ahead, Mayor.
No, finish.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, my point, I understand what you're saying, um, you know, the phone thing is, is the big issue, cause I use my cellphone for, constantly for city issues, you know, especially taxpayers, between texting and public works and we're taking pictures, I've probably got more pictures in here than I have family uh, from city functions and, uh, city issues, but, um, and a, again, the shirt, I buy my own, cause you all know where I'm coming from, cause I like to see it making, made in the USA, so I buy my own shirts, but, um, that's it. Oh, another question, this might be a legal question. So if we have our own personal computers, and they have to FOIA our computer, what, what happens in that case?
Same thing that happens to your phone.
It's just the application. It's, all you have is, um, you have software, right? The app?
Mm-hmm.
That's really it. That's why it's changed, even Pat Bonn, I've had this question. You could, you, if you FOIA'd me, you'd have to take ten devices, cause I have email on like
Right, right.
Two phones, I have it on my iPad. So it's just the app. So really, that, it's irrelevant now. They're not, they could take the, they can't take the laptop, cause it's really the app. That's all they need access for, if they needed a FOIA, is they need to get into your email. Doesn't matter. They don't need to use your device anymore.
And it's limited to subject matter, person, time, span.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, the, the FOIA stuff, that all goes through the computer sys, the city system.
Yeah.
And they get, they'll get all your emails through there. They don't need your laptop if it's your personal. I'm just curious, these two units, are they, do they have hotspots on them? Is that, is that what they are? They no, just here and maybe at home.
Yep.
Again, we should've probably gotten, because I was one of the first ones to have a laptop up here. Me and two other electeds decided to go with laptops instead of keep getting paper. We probably should've got some kind of allowance, like the phones, and I, I get it, the phone is cheap, right? It's twenty bucks, it's nothing. Internet, should get something.
Well, that's to Alderman Messina's point. This is an all encompassing cost, right? So it's saying notebook cell service, ten dollars a month. If you can find ten dollar a month cell service, let me know about it, cause it's way more than that.
Right, right.
Some of this other stuff is offset. I'm just saying, so total cost to do all of this is baked into that, but if you don't wanna be in it, you can just opt out.
At the end of the day, you're spending this money and more. I, I, I don't get the, the, the debate.
I'm just looking at the price of the four hundred dollars a year for either a Microsoft this thing, or iPad, or whatever.
Well, not that thing.
No, I, no, no.
That's why we're having this conversation.
But I three hundred bucks, a quarter, to me, that's a little stiff, because my phone, I mean, I don't use it for work. Like, some of these guys, I understand, you can't have your work stuff and your city stuff, you're gonna get fired, right? So I don't even do my work stuff out of here. They, they've asked me to put my stuff on here and I won't, because then I'm gonna have the same issue. So I just keep my own, right? Now, some of this is for personal use, so I shouldn't be getting reimbursed for everything, one hundred percent. I get it, but twenty bucks is not enough. Internet service for these things, or whatever thing there is none right now, we should have something, going from twenty dollars to three hundred dollars. But that's, that's, that's a little stiff.
Not to cut you off, you just, you just literally said we should have it.
No, no.
That's what the cost is.
That's
Cost, Noons.
I said, internet, internet service, right?
Right.
You wanna go sixteen hundred dollars for the laptop.
Right, well, now you're going from one thing to the other. Now you're going from
But here, notebook cell service, you get ten dollars, right, that's, that's cheap. Ten dollars is cheap, I get it. No.
Can I just, can I just add something? So like, Noons, okay, so like us.
Hold on a second.
I know, but you're like, you're going these line, like for us, think about what we pay. Every, we have to square up. We pay for Dropbox, him and I, we pay for Adobe because PDFs. We pay for that. Uh, I mean, all these things, your Wi, so my wifi could be way more than yours, right? Like, you use it differently. I have to have a hotspot, because we're constantly going to people's houses, right? Like, or have to tether my phone to that. All of this to say, like, we're all spending the money different. It is such a waste of time to track it. Here's an amount, you have. And this is, you decide what to do with it, or you opt out, if you don't, if you feel like every dollar has to be tracked. But I think everybody's made a case here that like, we're all spending this in way more than that. And if you don't, if you want like, you know, the Acer computer with dial-up, God bless you. I mean, that's to you, I mean, it's fine, and then maybe it works for you, but even like, I thought about the iCloud. I just, every month I get a bill from iCloud, cause of the storage. That's ten dollars a month I have to pay. Tony, Alderman Catalano probably doesn't even know that, but like, at some point, when you keep saving all those pictures, I mean, a lot of mine are, are my personal, are my kids, but like, you eventually, like, you're out of storage on the phone. This is an eight gig phone, this is a sixteen. When you're out, you're out. You gotta buy a plan, and now I pay ten bucks a month. Peter and I divvy up Adobe every month, right? How many times we square up? I mean, these are all applications that people do. Now again, everybody's different, but like, it is not fair that we have to come out of pocket for all this stuff, like.
I'm saying there should be something. I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
Probably more than three hundred. I could probably, if I sat and spent more time, I could give you, I could probably justify a case for five hundred a quarter.
We're going from twenty dollars to three hundred dollars, honestly.
Right.
The optics are really bad.
We, we waited for fourteen, fifteen years to do it. I mean, that, that's the problem.
It's kinda like healthcare. If I have no health problems, I mean.
Moving forward. I mean, it, it's more expensive.
Call the question.
Yeah.
This is crazy.
Phones, phones didn't get cheaper, services didn't get cheaper.
Right, but what we're voting on is it, so the motion and the second was for the entire, was for the entire list as it stands, so.
Yes.
Yes.
So if we say no, then we're tabled to come up with a different structure of this?
Correct.
Because that's
Yes.
Line item in video.
Okay, so let's do a roll call.
To be clear, it's for the collective amount of six hundred dollars, or three?
Whatever.
Two ninety-four, two ninety-four.
Or you can opt out and keep your life as basic as you want it to be, the city issued, and
And if, and one question, so if you have the city laptop, then you don't have to worry about the, um,
You wouldn't be in any of this. You just keep life as exactly as it is now, no allowance, aside from the cellphone allowance.
Right, okay.
Well, the cellphone allowance and everything else on here that is not the first line.
Right, if you read it, it says you can participate in which one you would want to.
So if I don't want shirts?
Kinda like out of cart, right? You got all this money and you, you're at a restaurant, out of the cart. What do you want?
I don't wanna involve, like Randy said, taking up any time with any city staff or any of this stuff. I get the full allowance and it's, all my expenses are on me.
All mine are there. Now, out of pocket, I'll eventually, probably like, for the windbreakers and all that stuff, that like, I, we spend an hour and ten emails. That's fine. I don't have to bother anymore. I'll pay out of my po, I'll pay with the money I have, recoup a little of my money and do that. I want a better laptop, or I wanna pay for the data cloud storage, all that stuff.
Mayor, please.
So, so how does it work if, if I get one of these new laptops here? Then what, we just deduct
Correct.
Thirty-three bucks a month?
Okay, call the question.
So, so look at, look at it this way. The city could be one of the vendors. If you choose to use the city as your vendor, then you just get all your stuff through the city, there is no check to you. If I'm using different vendors, I get a check. I'm gonna pay the other vendor.
So, so the shirts, are we buying them from the same place the city's buying them? Are, are we buying the business cards from the same place the city's doing, or everybody's just gonna be willy-nilly and go do whatever, whatever, because
We have the same PNG file that has the same three different Wooddale logos, the one with the leaf, the one with the leaf with the Wooddale logo, and the one with just the Wooddale logo.
And please, buy them in the USA.
There you go.
And I got more flexibility to do that, right?
How you get paid for it, Tony?
Let's just see where
What is the actual motion?
The motion was to accept
Thirty, two ninety-four, thirty-one.
Two ninety-four, thirty-one.
Right, approve the item as presented by staff.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
No.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, city-owned building appraisals and insurance broker in September, and equipment evaluation, cost effectiveness of Prairie Fest to be determined. Are there any other items to be added for future meetings? Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I'd like to, um, I don't know if this is the right committee, but I was looking, uh, at Dominion for the, uh, street signs. They have old street signs there. And I was looking, um, to put the new street signs. I've been getting some complaints from residents over there that they're telling me they don't, um, feel like they're a part of the city of Wooddale, they drive into their, uh, their residence, so we can put that on committee. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If there's nothing else, I
Well, I have a question.
Alderman Artwoods?
It's on the, the alderman's. Didn't we discuss that once before and determine, Mr. Murmice, that that's not a city street, or what was the issue? I know that, I, I remember talking about this.
Mr. Murmice?
You're correct.
Yeah, that was
I'm not looking to be correct, but I, I know that we, we talked about it, and so was it that we, it voted down, or was it said that we can't do it?
Director Lane.
So we know how to approach this.
So the, the streets there are privately owned, so they're not, there's no city right of way, uh, that we would have jurisdiction over, aside from the easements for the, the water main and sewers.
So we, so could we, and I, and I'm trying to, this is quite a while ago. I, I wanna say that one of the options was, I don't know if, maybe it was at Fireside or somewhere, I, I don't, I don't know if it was this one, but couldn't they purchase it, the, the poles and the signs from us? Right?